We'd like to call the Board of Trustees evening to order and welcome everybody. I'd like to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Ah, roll call.
Charlie, here.
Amy.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Manal.
Here.
John.
Here.
White.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here. Public comments, anyone in the audience or on social media or Zoom have anything to comment about? Hearing none, minutes from previous meetings? Is it?
They were on the.
The other one, right, okay, thank you. Health insurance presentation, presentation by Corey Toth-Lepointe, Spectrum Benefit Solutions of Central Wisconsin LLC. Welcome, Corey.
Thank you, good evening. Awesome. All right, you have a folder and I know that Sherry puts myself in the packet. If you open your folder on the right-hand side, you have sort of like an agenda for this evening along with a spreadsheet. The renewal for November from group health co-op was released or initially should have come out at a 34% increase for the village, Everest Metro and Safer. The three divisions are combined into one and if it was technically supposed to come out at a 34% increase, it was released at a 17%. We did go back and ask for rate relief from group health co-op and at this point in time, they are not giving rate relief. That equals a $181,000 increase in total premium to this group. If you look at the past increases for us, in 2019, they released a 1% increase. We did not shop the market. In 2018, it was about an 8% increase. We did shop the market. They ranged from a nine to a 34% increase from other carriers. And then in 2017, we received a 20% increase and in 2016, we received about a 13% increase. So just kind of giving you some history for the past few years of what's been happening. The loss ratio right now with this group is 132%. So does everybody understand what we talk about when you have a loss ratio?
No.
Okay. So let's say we have $100,000 in premiums. If I just use that, we have $132,000 in claims.
Okay.
Okay, so when we talk about that, an insurance carrier wants your loss ratio to be around 85%. That gives them enough operating money for staff, Rick and Mert, pay claims comfortably. Okay? So you are technically paying claims, paying claims more than you're paying in a premium right now. All right? If we look at your past year's loss ratio, 2018, 19 plan year, you're 116. 2017, 18, you were running really well at 68%. 2016, 17, you were at 172. 15, 16, you were at 202. Okay, so for one period, you did very well. Not sure what happened that year, but now you're running a little hot. We did look at different group health co-op deductible options and we'll go through that. We did quote this year, we had employees complete applications and submitted it to other insurance committees. Aspiris with a limited narrow network in this area came in at a 48% load over current. Security Health Plan, on a standalone basis, and why I'm telling you this is because I'll find something a little different later. But if I take your group as a three-division combined, they came in at a 20%, 29% increase over your current. WBA declined. They basically said, we can't compete, can't compete. WPS Health Insurance, 89% higher. Anthem, 37%. National General is kind of like my MGU. There, I can go to them and they can quote all their bunch of different carriers for me and they don't have anything better than what your renewal was. So when I met with the insurance committee last week and we looked at options, if you pull out the second page, it was on the right-hand side, which is the spreadsheet. Your current plan is on the left. So you have a $1,500 single deductible, $3,000 family deductible, 80% co-insurance, $4,000 max out-of-pocket for a single, $8,000 max for a family. And your current rate structure will go along with what the renewal came in at 17%. Below that, when I met with the insurance committee, they wanted to kind of see what it broke out to versus employee versus employer and then what it looked like on a per paycheck basis. So if we look at that increase for an employer, currently it's $907,000 is the employer fund. And that says a total, so that's not broken out by the three divisions, that's total. If we accept the renewal at the 17%, it's basically a million dollar in premium. If we look below that, you can see currently that the employees pay on an employee per paycheck basis, $51.52 and $128.81 per family. Okay. So an option that we discussed at the committee meeting last week was for November 1st, moving to that option that's on the right-hand side on your spreadsheet that's highlighted a little bit in yellow. Increases the deductible to 2,000 per single, 4,000 per family, leaving the co-insurance at 8%, keeping all of your copays for office visits, prescription drugs at where they are right now. Increasing the total out-of-pocket for an individual to $5,500 and the family to $11,000. That would reduce your premium increase to basically 9.77%. And then the premium totals are below. It moves you back down to an employer contribution of $996,000 and employee contribution of 175. When we look at employee contribution, if we look at the current employee's single, 51, 52, it would move to 56, 55. An employer would be, or excuse me, family would be 141, 39 versus the 128, 81 that it is currently. And this would go into effect November 1st. And this would move us to basically a 9.77% increase. With that said, this would be an option for November 1st. I do have an option on the table from Security Health Plan for a January 1 effective date. This is the information that's on your left side of your folder, if you take that spreadsheet out.
Does this move? This did not go through committee?
This went through committee, this went through insurance committee.
I'm sorry, what?
This went through insurance committee.
Which is staff, here. Okay. We'll talk about that later.
But I wanted to sort of do, what we need to decide on tonight technically is what we're going to do for November 1st. We need to do something for the two months that we have remaining. And then we have a little time to decide what we want to do for January. So for November, the, this is not that I won't say the decision of the insurance committee was this, but the recommendation of the insurance committee was to increase the deductibles for two months and take that 9.77% increase and stay with group health for two months. The option on the table from Security Health Plan is we have a cooperative opportunity that would actually lower your current rates by approximately 5%. Spectrum Insurance Group started a cooperative with Security Health Plan in 2019. In your packet behind this spreadsheet, there is a list of our current groups. Kind of a small print spreadsheet.
Okay.
In 2019, in January, we started a 14 groups. In January in 2020, we increased it to 21 additional groups. In July of this year, we added eight more. And the ones at the bottom, the 10 groups that you currently see on there are ones that have been accepted by underwriting currently. And I apologize, this was not given to Sherry, just because this co-op is Spectrum's information and we don't put it out for public print. So this is why you have it in paper for you right now.
You want this returned? We should return this. Okay, everybody?
Yeah. So the information that you're seeing as far as the groups, I don't mind if you watch, you keep a couple copies and if you're interested in calling them. The five that are at the top are board members. There are original board members that started with the cooperative. But you can call any group on here. They'd be more than happy to talk to you about their experience so far within the co-op. We have not increased rates for two years on this group. We've had 0% renewals that have come in. So out of these current groups, we've had 43 groups currently that total about 659 contracts, 1,248 members for $8 million in premium. So when I talk about your group on a level of three divisions combined as one and your premium that's coming in currently on your group is 1 million. And you are at 132% loss ratio. That means you have 132% or $1,300,000 over claims. If I'm talking about an $8 million premium group, we have room for 132, well, basically a $1 million claim if we have to have it. Does that make sense for everybody? Okay. So when we did underwriting on your group, Security Health Plan accepted you as a complete group. You can stay together as a group of all three divisions. And you can stay together as a group of three if you'd like to separate. Why that is important is because right now, under your current structure without the cooperative, I can separate the group. There are two segments of your group that qualify for large group, medical underwriting. There is one that does not. And they would move to the Affordable Care Act pricing model and they would be about a 70% higher rate. So the structure of the co-op is safer right now as a combined group, or excuse me, the structure of the co-op is safer as a combined group and/or three segmented groups. So at any one time, we could possibly, if it ever came down to it, we could separate the groups and they'd still be whole because we're under a large group concept with 43 other groups at this point in time. So this is just a discussion point tonight, knowing that we have an alternative for January 1 that could technically save the village of less than Everest Metro and Safer premium dollars for health insurance now and in the future, assuming that we're going to keep the co-op as a viable option. We're running, the last couple of years, we run around a 60% loss ratio. Right now, we're at 74 with our groups that are currently in here. Like I said, the ones that are currently on the list, you, I did not put you on the list because I do not have some acceptance from you. But the groups that are on the list at the bottom have accepted. And we've got about 10 more that are going into underwriting yet right now. I submitted a couple more yet today. So there's about 10 more that are completing applications and stuff yet for January 1.
So did you say that we went into underwriting already?
You're already into underwriting.
And been approved.
And approved. I just have signed a paper from you.
Okay, from us.
From you. Now with that said, there are some things and commitments that will be needed from you as a, as a whole and/or as separate units, depending on how you wanted to do this for January. At the back of the left-hand side, there's membership agreement. If you turn to page two of the membership agreement, number 6, 7 and 8 are a little bit more of what our fees are. Number 6 and 7 are combined. We ask you to give us a three-year commitment to join the cooperative. Every group that comes in does this. And why we do that is for stability of our group. We don't want groups to come in and out and not have the stability of the co-op for all groups that come in. So we ask for a three-year commitment. In order to kind of hold that commitment and hold our groups accountable, we ask for one month of premium to be held in trust for 25 months. So upon the entry of your third, technically your second year going in, we, or your third year going in, we give that money back to you. So I asked, we basically bill you and upon about 25 months, we send you that check back. We send you a check back. But we hold it in trust for 25 months as a commitment that you are making to us to stay within the co-op. There is a one-time stock fee of $100 and there is an annual fee of $200 to stay in the cooperative. We have board of directors and E and O coverage on our board that costs us about $17,000 a year that we maintain on that in the group. We also have cyber coverage that protects the data that we keep in house, that we pay. We have attorney's fees and other things that we run through. Not everything is covered because we just technically pay incomes to run this. So Spectrum covers quite a bit of it on our own, but those annual fees and stuff do cover some of it. But I wanted to point out this with the membership agreement. So there is some commitment from you to join.
$200 per member or as a group?
As a group.
Okay, as a group.
So if you split it apart into three groups.
Right. Then it'd be two, two, two.
Correct.
And then, so these 19, when they joined in 19.
Yes.
In the beginning, so they're now finishing their first three years next year?
Yes, I will be sending them the check in February.
Okay. So, and that's those top five in X's that started?
Yes.
Okay.
They started with about.
And now, will they have an option to renegotiate another three-year?
Yes, they don't negotiate, they're just in.
Oh, okay. A year to year or three years at a time?
Year to year.
Okay.
They can come out at any point in time next year.
Okay.
We started with about $332,000 worth of premium in the first year. So that's how much I was sending back out in February.
I kind of jumped ahead here to discussion, so, I mean, do we want her to finish or do you want more discussion with Corey?
I guess I would like to.
Finish the first page.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
So basically at this time, my initial thought is we need to decide something for November because that's, you know, two weeks away. So we need to let group health co-op know what we're going to do for December. The other thing for the co-op, if we go back to that spreadsheet, sorry, kind of jumping around. The plan designs that we did look at are two plan designs. The insurance committee would like to offer two plans for their employees for January if we do decide to move forward.
I just, I have to make a point here for Steve, anyone new, Nate possibly. The insurance committee, you just said insurance committee for their employees. Just sort of way understands this, our insurance committee here is staff.
Right.
And I believe we should change that to the HR and like finance and maybe have some staff people on there. It's, I just think it's extremely irregular that staff has their own committee for health insurance and then recommends. I think this is the body that actually decides that. I've actually never ever heard this, you know, so I'm not, I'm not trying to be a negative here. But for staff to be doing this, I think there should be a committee involved in this and possibly financing it also, but I think HR belongs on this in the future, not right now. I think we've got to move forward, but, so I just, I just want to clarify what she just said. That the insurance committee is recommending for their staff and that's, they are staff, so they're employees.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
We found, we found over the years that we had far more cooperation with employees.
Oh, I totally believe you would, totally. I just, that would be the only thing we have here that we're doing it that way. I don't, I don't believe we have that done that way anywhere else.
Can I?
No, go ahead.
Because you are on that committee and I would.
Yeah, I think it's a great, I mean, I disagree with you respectfully, but I think it's been great. There's no, we have no ability to bargain as a union or my employees because of insurance. And like Barb said, this gives buy-in. There is HR members, I do all the HR, most of it at my, at EMP and Sherry's there. As you can see in this recommendation, we're reckon, we're actually recommending a reduction in benefits and a reduction of cost. It gets the employees more of a buy-in, they get really well versed in what the options are and they understand financially what's out there, they understand things like loss ratio. They really get involved. There's a lot of numbers here, but even a couple of meetings I've been at, you know, you really get to understand it quickly, so.
It's relatively a low group, you know, I, you know, I agree with that. And, you know, you're on there, I know Matt's probably on there and then Keith is on there too, so. I just want to be, make sure that anyone new here understands how it works.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, when we used to do it by, you know, just not staff, but the administrator, board and whatnot all, it was really sometimes a hard pill for the employees to swallow because they did not understand what was being presented. And the thing is, they don't have any power to approve or disapprove.
Right, oh, I know that.
And we actually, the board gets all the information that they were given, but at least they can give a recommendation and we can take it or not take it. But to me, it has just been, I just think it's, it has worked so much better. The, the hard feelings of like they were getting it crammed down their throat. The board was just looking at, you know, whatever, just to see how much they could put on the employee. Well, they now understand where it's coming from and they can make their own recommendation. I, I really think it's a, a unique board and I really would hate to see it changed.
I, I am only one person, my one opinion, I am not going to push this. So I was just making a point and I'm also, I think we're blessed on who our administrator is too. That I, I think the trust that staff has with him and Chief Schultz.
Right.
I think is, goes a long way.
You know, but yeah, and I guess.
I made my point and now let's move on. I'm sorry that I, I didn't want to get anybody going, go ahead, Lauren.
Having been on an office for a while in employee gear myself, I think the committee that's formed has become better informed. Something as simple as gosh, my usage of my insurance affects everyone. So they think, oh, instead of going to emergency room, I can go to a walk-in. It costs me way less money. It doesn't, it doesn't affect their loss ratio because I can tell you from a visit to the ER for something really stupid, $14,000.
Yep. I agree.
And I think it's, it's paid off in better relations with the employees in particular because they understand, they understand that even though we would love to pay the entire premium, we just can't do it. It's a shared burden. And, and as we go along, the deductibles keep going up and that's how we try to mitigate the cost to the employees. The employees are willing to accept a hit on the deductibles and, and for a reduction in the premium. But when I look this over, their, their possible use of deductible is way higher than their reduction of their, their premium that they're paying.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the buy-in.
Myself, since I'm on social security and Medicare, it doesn't affect me that much. But I understand the usage is the big deal.
Okay.
Can I, are you done with what you?
I don't think she's done.
No, no.
I'm definitely done, Barb, I'm definitely done.
She's very patient.
You don't, you don't have to sell anymore.
No, I had some other comments, I just wanted to make.
If we put the current plan design spreadsheet kind of back to the one for the spectrum co-op. As Clay mentioned, the employees would be taking a reduction in benefits as far as their deductible and their total out-of-pocket, or excuse me, their deductible from current and their total out-of-pocket. They would also be looking at, when you look at the rate structure, they'd be going from a two-tier of single family to a four-tier. So the employee or the families are going to see an increase in premium. And we talked about that at the insurance committee meeting as well with the employees. And there's really nothing that we can do with those family members in this tiering structure. The employee, employee spouse and employee children are going to technically like this policy for the premium reduction. The families, probably not so much, and the increase in deductibles. But for the stability of a plan, they're hoping that the co-op will bring them stability over the next few years and not have a premium change and not have a plan design change that they have to try to look at for the next few years. That is what most of our co-op members like, that we can deliver them a 0% increase. Their employees don't have to complete forms, their employees can just say, great, I don't have to do anything this year. And that's the stability that we're hoping for right now. They did like the option of offering a traditional plan and a high deductible health plan. I know that Jessica's worked on numbers to be able to hopefully sustain some funds for the employees in an HSA account for the members that do have or would like to elect to open up a health savings account. The insurance community of the members did really stress that they would prefer not to offer just the health savings account plan or the high deductible plan. For those members that we tried at once, I guess several years before Spectrum became an agent with you, that many of the employees became adept to the structure of a high deductible health plan where all claims go to that deductible and there's no office visit copays or anything and except until that deductible's met. And some employees really struggled with that. So they would like to maintain a copay plan and also offer the pretty early high deductible health plan.
So you have a high-low single and a high-low family?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, I'm done.
No, good. Yeah, I just want to tell you, I listened to you maybe last year or the year before.
Yes.
And I got to compliment you, I've sit through many of these, you know, for what I do. And you do it, just a great job. You have a lot of confidence in how you present this. I think it's very understandable and I, I've sat through some that I absolutely don't know what is being said at all and I have to ask unbelievable amount of questions. I know I'm asking a lot of questions tonight, but you do a really good job. You really do, so I wanted to compliment you on that. Keith, did you want to weigh in at all? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Keith?
Well, I heard the comments, I mean, I'm not sure if they were much. I guess I have a, you know, that obviously in the end, this has to be a decision by the village, but I do agree with the comments about the committee having more, it gives it more, it gives more buy-in, more, more knowledge and understanding of what all goes into this and believe the act's still learning about it too, so. Anyway, I know I've talked to a couple of you today and I had talked to Jessica again earlier this morning. I know she's getting ready to queue up something here to kind of talk about maybe the other aspects which would be the perhaps an option to consider on the, on a high deductible plan. If that's something that people want to consider.
Okay, thank you. I agree with that, Keith, that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Barb, go ahead.
Go ahead, finish talking to him.
Oh, well, I mean, well, now I actually lost my train of thought. I can't believe it.
Your train uncoupled?
Huh?
Your train uncoupled?
No, no, okay, so, you know, if you think about it, you know, insurance, we should understand this and we don't. And almost in every circle, it's really hard to understand, yet we use it as single, single people or family people and it's just amazing how intimidated sometimes we are of this. So I absolutely agree, you know, the buy-in on this, especially being a small group, that you're able to be involved in this and then yet, when other people can't go to the meeting and then you can talk to them and you can sell it, you know, you with your officers, you know, Sherry, Jen, Jessica, you know, all the different people here that can work with everybody, Michael. So I get that. It's just, I realized this before on this, on this committee and it is just, it's actually remarkable when you think about it for where I've been. And so I just wanted to make sure that some people here understand when she's using the wording she is, that the committee is staff, so. And you're right, we approve and go ahead, Barb.
Well, I guess I look at this co-op and when I was on the county board, I spent a lot of time. I was on one of the groups that sat in on these meetings for healthcare insurance. And we found that we, the county went with the Wisconsin Counties Association, they have a group. And they actually, because it was a co-op of many, they actually saved a lot of money for a lot of years. And they were going to get out of that at one point, I don't know what they. And they were going to get out of that at one point. I don't know what they did after I left, but it, it just, it, say you have really a bad year, but these other ones are having okay years or somebody has a real, you know,
The balance is.
That's the, the wash is that, you know, say like we had a good year. That would have been our benefit to the committee. Now we had a bad year. So I mean, to me, these co-ops are actually, when we're by ourselves.
It's hard.
We're, we're just, we're, you know.
The balance is very good. Corey, are you actually the representative for this whole sheet? Do you actually talk to all these or do you have other counterparts that do that?
There are other agents that handle the majority, not the majority, some of them. I am the director in our office that handles.
Okay. And are you located around here, right?
I'm in Lawson.
Okay. So do you personally handle Jerry Bricker?
Uh, he is on my account, but I, I know, yes.
Okay. All right. Um, well, so we're already in the discussion part.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I, I put it up there and I, um, just going to point out, everybody's budget is up on the top. And then you can see how the, how they calculate out. So this is what the numbers that Corey gave us and then calculated out. So either plan can fit in the budgets. I guess I just want to point that out. On one of the, she gave a, a group savings, but it really does depend upon how each group was separated between the family, employee child, employee spouse. Those are the, and then I did do the two, the high deductible plan versus the traditional plan. So you can see the savings between those two. And I did that. And then the savings by group, which really emphasizes where each group would see the savings if we chose to do a high deductible plan. If the board decides they want to just offer both plans. What I did was take the premium that the village pays for a traditional plan versus the premium that the, that the village would pay for a high deductible plan and I figured out the difference. Cause you don't want to treat one employee like a family if you choose to do a traditional plan, which would incur eleven hundred dollar savings for the village. We assume that the village would want to give that eleven hundred savings to the employee to put in their HSA. If they choose an HSA versus the traditional plan. So I did it for each group.
Wait a minute. So if they chose the high deductible.
Yes.
Which costs them more money, you're going to actually give that savings back to the employee?
If the employee chose to do a high deductible of a premium of fifteen oh two, compared to the family of fifteen ninety-five, multiplied by twelve, that's, the village would save, see a savings of eleven hundred dollars for that family. So it's if the village would like to, I believe that, I don't think the village should keep the savings because that family decided to use a, a just a plan. That way that all employees would get the same benefit for our family health plan.
So you're saying you give the one thousand, one whatever back to the?
To the employee for their HSA, health savings account. That way that each family that takes out health insurance with the village would be getting the same benefit.
Okay.
But they're choosing two different plans. They're, they're choosing the high deductible.
Well, you have to remember what the high deductible is a chance plan. So you're taking a chance that you're, you're not needing all the funds that you can afford a high deductible plan.
So if the chance works out for them, then they have more of a saving than the other family that took the other traditional plan. And then on top of it, they're getting the savings of a hundred, a thousand eighteen going back to them. Right? So they, they actually win twice. They win on the savings that the village gets and they win on the chance. So now it's, now it's not the same for the two families again. Right? So the traditional family that, you know.
I guess I would not short benefit. I mean, the village could just give out seventeen thousand dollars to each family and say, here, go find your own health insurance too. And.
Uh, that's been talked about. Not, not here, but I, I know in private businesses certainly has.
It was just the, doing the numbers, that's what the village could offer.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there any thought about what happens when they have employees whose spouse carries the insurance and they don't carry any from the village?
Currently, we do not compensate.
No.
Okay, well.
And I, I got to tell you, our company does not either and I am on the wrong side there because I believe we should. And, and because I've been in companies that have paid, you know, a thousand or two thousand dollars a year if you switch it over.
It's part of your employee.
Yeah. And, and there's some, there, there's actually a company in town that years ago, if, if your spouse had insurance, they forced you to put your spouse over on their plan. And then your child or children could then be on whichever one actually is more beneficial to the family. So that, that's out there too. There's a lot of different things. Yeah. Interesting.
Okay.
What was your question? Oh, if they, if they're not with us, yeah.
If they don't carry any insurance with us, they don't get any benefit.
A lot of places.
And we have some employees here that have that and no, they're not, they're not.
Okay. Just wanted it for information.
Sure. Okay.
But they do it because their spouse's insurance is either better or less expensive.
Yeah, it, it, it is either way, but still it's, like you said, it's a savings to the village of a thousand eighteen, one hundred and eighteen dollars. That's, that, that pair pales in comparison to someone that actually elects their spouses, whether it's a gain for them. But now we're talking the savings of what? Fifteen thousand dollars? Fifteen thousand dollars? I mean, on a family plan, something like that?
There's a lot of places that don't allow that.
I, I know, but that's a choice. It's, there's a lot of places that may not allow it like ours, but that's a choice. We can allow it.
No, I mean, that say that if your spouse has insurance, that spouse cannot come on your insurance. They've got to. Cause I, our son.
It's very expensive. Yeah. Okay, well.
She's very patient.
Um, okay. One of my questions is why can't we get on this Corey? Um, we have to wait till January first?
Yes.
We have to do this two-month thing? Okay.
Yes, part of the regulations with our urgent security health line, they can have groups come on in January and July.
I see.
So we have to wait.
Those are the two windows?
Yes.
Of any given year? Okay. And then, then they go three years after that. Okay. Well, what's everybody, Steve, you've been really quiet. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I have been involved in this and it seems to be a problem when we have change of providers three months left of the year and it works out for municipalities because we budget by calendar year, not fiscal year to have it come doing, starting on January one. And, and I think it's an opportunity for us to get on that. Twelve month, January to December schedule. I don't know if that makes any difference to anybody else. You like that call? Yes.
Makes a huge dis- difference for finance. Corey can't give us numbers for your annual sixty days before.
The other thing too is when you stay with a carrier, I, I've been through many changes of carriers. It's a royal pain in the keister when you have to, so this year I have security health. Two years from now I have WPS Wisconsin positions. And then we're back here and back and forth. And it is a nightmare to figure out how to process claims. It, it takes somebody that's really on top of it. Once you get into a plan or a group or a provider, you kind of know, you find their way. And it goes a lot easier and it's also easier for your healthcare providers. What's your insurance this day? And it's a different provider all the time. And I know that's a, not nice for your providers either.
Okay. Um, Steve, anything?
God, I hate insurance. I, it's, it's, it's incredibly confusing. I don't know why it's spouse and employee or employee and children. I've always seen it as either you're single or family. That's what I've been exposed to in my career. I, I'm a little bit hesitant to, to think that we should compensate people with lower premiums on some of this when we know that it's going to continue to go up and I don't know how it's being priced out. I, I also have never heard of, of Spectrum before, so I'm not real familiar with what the back room stuff is. And if, if the insurance is, you know, how it's regulated or where, what our liability is. I didn't obviously read all of this, the contract here, but I don't know what our liability is. If we wanted to change it, if we just out the eighty thousand dollars or whatever that first month premium is going to be. I, I have a lot of questions and I also, I have always liked the, you know, the high premium and, cause I like to set up my HSA. I, I mean, it's a, for me, it was, it's beneficial with the tax changes. It's even better now than it was before. So there's, there's a lot of questions that are going through in my mind. And I know there's some variables in that also. Not saying the co-op isn't a good thing. I'm just saying it's a lot to digest right this second. And, um, yeah, I, I'm curious about a few things too.
Done? Nate?
I guess I'm leaning more towards the stay for the last three months than go to the co-op.
So, I'm sorry, what?
Uh, my understanding is we'd finish out the last three months and then jump to the co-op.
Yes. That's actually the only way we can get into the co-op, correct? Okay. Yep. And so you're leaning that way?
Yeah.
Yeah. Barb, yes.
Me too. I'm leaning towards the co-op.
Ye, any thoughts?
No thought. I'm sorry, I was muted.
That's all right. Okay. Okay. I'm just kind of going around the board here, just asking for anything here. So, so right now, looking. Oh.
No, no.
We have no, yes, we do. Yes. And possible action. Yes. So there is a possible action here. Yep.
Okay, we will be offering option one and two to the employees?
Uh, that's what the insurance committee would like, yes.
Yes. So let's put on the table what the insurance committee would like. So we'd be doing the last two months and then switch January first to the co-op.
With two, they have two options?
Yes, with the two options. Yeah, but the committee has said high-low, high-low, which I, I believe is extremely normal. Is that in the proposal of the savings going back to the employee for the HSA C? It is? Or is not? Is that, it, actually we can make that the proposal or not, or do half, half the savings for?
There is a ton of different options. They also computed it if the village were to only offer a high deductible. I'm not sure how. I know it wasn't the top priority for the village committee or if it was staff committee. But, I mean, there were significant savings compared to the twenty twenty budget.
Right. Well, I, I, I believe the high-low is very correct. I, I think that option, I've been around that for a long time now and I think that's right. I think the employee or the family should be able to pick high-low and have a little more risk or a little bit more gain, whatever. So I think that's what should be on the table if, if we're going to make this go through here. And I, I, time is of the essence a little bit here. We can't, I, I don't know when we'd be able to do this again. So.
See a question?
I'm sorry, yes Keith?
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
Do we? And this is maybe more for Jessica or Corey. And in terms of proposal to, disperse or I guess divide savings, you're talking about premium savings and back to the employees who may choose the HSA or the high deductible.
The high deductible, yes.
And this is year one and if, if they continue on the HSA next year, we presume that premium will continue to be lower. And of course that's the end of the game, I guess, but then I guess in terms of any, we would not be proposing then to provide additional assistance in future years or how would we, how would we look at that?
A year basis.
Is that question to Jessica or to all of us?
Well, yeah, to Jessica and everybody, I mean.
Okay. Want to feel better or no?
I think it depends how the village board wants to apply benefits to the employees. If they want to treat all employees the same and say, okay, you want family health insurance? This is the benefit you're going to get for family health insurance. I think that's something the board has to decide. I mean, if you're going to say this employee is going to take a risk, take the risk, we're not going to give you as much as the, your neighbor who chose a traditional, that's, that's up to the board.
Well, the, just, I just want to respond. The, the only thought I had there was if we're going to treat them all the same for the benefit, then if they win, you know, with the.
But that was the risk they took.
Yeah, I know. But, but if they win and win, then, then that's actually more than the traditional. But Lauren?
Well, it, this can be decided every year. It doesn't necessarily mean it is in place for three years. The plan is in place for three years, but we're talking about.
You, you mean inside, we mean here?
Right. We're talking about perhaps compensating an employee who takes more risk, more risk than the employee who takes the, and that's not, that is, can, doesn't necessarily have to be for three years. It's got to be for a year if you want.
I, I'm, I'm going to go, this is my opinion. I will vote for what this committee has recommended along with that caveat on the one thousand one hundred and eighteen. And I'm not bending. Uh, just because we, you know, kind of disagree, which I kind of still agree on what my point was. But I, I will go along with what, you know, they put all the work into this and they've been putting the work in over the past years. So, uh, you know, we've got a lot of people involved in this and I would support that if a motion hits the floor.
I move that we adopt the, the insurance committee's recommendation with that caveat.
So what, I just want to clear that. So you're, you're making a motion to go to next two months as Corey had stipulated. And then moving to the co-op January first with the caveat of the high risk of the one thousand one hundred and eighteen going back to the HHS. How many H's and S's were in there?
So you have to, the, the single get three, I have it all broken out.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, the single gets three seventy-seven, single spouse eight twenty, and then employee child six eighty-nine. It's all based on the savings that we've seen.
So that's your motion?
Yeah.
Um, looking for a second?
A second.
Second by white on the discussion.
So, okay, help me understand this. I'm getting lost in this here. So we're going to have a savings in the ins- on the insurance premium for the village and that savings is going to be redistributed to the employees.
That's only on the premium.
Not all of it.
That's only a premium. Now, there'll still be a savings overall.
Right, the budget for the village.
This is individually for each family member that, that's possibly picks the high risk, the high deductible one. That the savings, there would be additional savings to the village that that savings would go back into their, how mu- how many H's and S's are in that thing?
HSA.
HSA. Wow, it's that simple. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Um, Steve, if I can help you, look at the co-op plan design.
Yes.
If, if we look at just the traditional plan and everybody's enrolled in that, that's an estimated almost five percent decrease from current.
Yes, from current, from a seventeen increase. Right.
Correct. So if everybody, if we just take that plan design, we have about a five percent increase from current. If we look at the high deductible health plan, that's the orange plan next to it.
Right.
That's a, that's a ten percent savings from current. So what Jessica's doing is basically saying, if you take a high deductible, I'm going to take the premium difference between those two and give that difference to the employee in the health savings account. So no matter what, you just cover up that pink, that, the orange column. No matter what, the, the, the minimum savings for all three divisions should be approximately four point eight seven percent.
Yes.
In premium savings.
Right.
Overall. And it'll be additional premium savings, but that additional premium savings is going to go to the employee just for taking the additional risk in the high deductible.
High deductible, which in turn is a savings to the village.
Which has been turned to a savings to the village.
But then, okay, so it meets a definition for, to the IRS for a high deductible, HSA.
Yes, it has a call for minimum deductible and stuff like that for, for the health savings account, yes.
And it goes to an HSA account. It's not a party account. It's, HSA is pretty restricted.
Well, true. I know, but it, it is going back into, but it's still a savings and indirectly it's still a savings here. I, I, Matt, just so you know, I am putting you on notice that we are definitely going to pull forty grand out of your health insurance next year. Cause you've been sandbagging. And I mean, if, I have a big smile on my face. But we kind of saw the budget this year and didn't realize how he could actually cover a saving, a seventeen percent increase and more. And so.
With all due respect, it's not sandbagging. We have to drop over insurance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I know that. I know. But, but we, we, we had a pleasant surprise when we saw that. A very pleasant surprise. So, little humor, just a little humor. Okay. Very little. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion and a second. On the discussion?
Are we going to have Edie review the agreement?
Ooh, interesting. Keith, did you hear that question?
Uh, no, I didn't quite hear it.
Okay, come on. Okay, come on, stick.
Are we gonna have Matt Edie, our attorney for the village, uh, review the agreement that's here? So we're confident with the liabilities that might be associated with the co-op?
Certainly can.
Okay. So do we need to have that go back to the first and second motion that...
We can amend the motion.
Amend the motion? Do you want to amend the motion, Steve?
I'd like, uh, I'd like to amend the motion to make it contingent upon Matt Edie being satisfied with the agreement that they proposed.
Okay.
Uh, well, trustee White, I think I can accept that as a friendly amendment without needing the vote, correct? I choose to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, all right, so we're in.
As far as accepting any time in the co-op, any time before, I prefer it to be any time before December first, so we can get...
Oh, yeah, we got plenty of them, yeah.
It's not a lengthy, uh, not a real lengthy agreement.
Just contingent upon, so if we're approving it unless he comes up with something.
Yes, exactly. So are we legal with how this amendment is working? We don't need a second to his, okay? All right, so we, uh, on the discussion, any more discussion? Um, hearing none and the, the motion was approved, uh, made by Feeny and seconded by White. Just sort of, um, ev- everyone, uh, uh, look, uh...
All in favor?
All in favor, thank you, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, so carried, wow, major brain food. All right, we're done?
You're too young for that.
Director Wodowski has something?
You're too young for that yet.
Yeah, whoops, yeah, no kidding, Keith, Michael?
I have a good question.
Yes.
Yeah, it's fun. For the deductibles, I was gonna single and somebody, would it seem like a boy, a boy child? Was there an elderly? Yeah.
Yes. In, in the traditional way, family is family, single is only single, correct? Yes. So a single with a child is family.
No. In the, in the, in the, uh, the, um, plan design, as far as your family out of pocket, yes.
Okay.
In premium, it's split by premium only.
Okay, got it, okay, I'm good.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Yeah, I, I think we should give back, um, the list of, of layers. I think we should give that back to her, please.
Uh, trustee Ermeling had something too.
Oh, I'm sorry, just this piece, right?
Something that caught my attention and I kept forgetting to ask it. Um, under option one, family maximum out of pocket is ten thousand, but for each option two, it's six thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, high deductible health plan, if you look at that, the single deductible is two thousand. The family is four, and then it says a hundred percent. Medical claims are paid at a hundred percent after that deductible is met on that high deductible health plan. The only thing that goes to that mass out of pocket is prescription drug pay. So after that deductible is met, prescription drugs might have a pay. So you're gonna, on a single plan, you're gonna have a thousand dollars more of the prescription drug pay. On a family, you're gonna have two thousand dollars more. But all of your medical doctor's appointments, x-rays, labs, claims like that are gonna be paid at a hundred percent.
It's just your prescription, is it?
Just your prescription.
Right.
Does that answer your question, Ross?
Okay.
I was just sitting there and going, you know, all of a sudden, something didn't...
That's why we all love insurance so much.
It didn't connect with me and I'm going, okay, why? And I kept forgetting to ask it.
Nope, I'm not making...
All right, thank you.
All right.
Yep, well done. Uh, reports minutes from boards, committees, commissions, number six, building committee. Um, any questions on the report?
Um, I move to acknowledge noting that these minutes have not yet been approved by the committee.
Um, yes, okay.
Well, you just acknowledged, yeah.
Yeah, acknowledged.
Yeah, acknowledged, okay. Um, second?
Second, I guess.
On the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Um, I'm doing only blues, correct?
Right.
Uh, number twelve, joint plan commission and public works and utilities.
Uh, motion to acknowledge, uh, twelve, fifteen, and eighteen as a whole.
Second.
Yep, moved by Feeny, seconded by White. On the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Thank you, ye. Reports from departments, administrator, Keith?
Yes, I'm here.
Any more? Oh.
I just want to apologize for, I guess, not quite editing my commentary about the use of the boardroom for the, um, first absentee voting. We all found the meeting rooms tonight, thankfully. So any, any public meetings we may need between now and, uh, after the November election will be over at the municipal courtroom. And then absentee, first absentee voting is taking place in the boardroom beginning tomorrow, which I'm sure Sheri will talk about. Otherwise, I have no other comments unless you have questions for me.
Hope your, uh, foot gets better?
Oh, thank you, yes.
Or knee, well, now he said to Barb today that his ankle hurts too, so. He's kind of whining pretty loud.
You're in your golden years.
He gets to pick whatever he wants to hurt.
Yeah.
I'm trying my feet, but I'm concerned my knee will all be...
Oh, boy.
That sounds brutal.
Yep, all right, twenty-two, clerk?
Well, just like we said, um, in person absentee voting starts tomorrow.
What time?
We're starting to set up here.
What time can the first person be here?
Eight to four-thirty, and we, we suspect there will be lines tomorrow because everybody knows it starts tomorrow. So I expect it to be pretty busy here tomorrow. So if you're wondering why there are a lot of cars here, that will be why. Most of the people I talked to, I said, you may not want to come the first day, but some people are, are eager to get that done right now. Um, and we're gonna finish the setup tonight and we'll be in here for weeks.
Uh, how many absentee, uh, or male absentee ballots have been requested and returned?
I think I have it in my reports.
See, it's three thousand, yeah, three thousand some.
Were issued, I can't remember the return number.
Twenty-two hundred sixty-five.
Yeah.
Two-thirds, I think bad at all.
Mine was returned.
So if I came in the side door at seven-thirty tomorrow, I, I might be first or not? If there are more people waiting out there? I don't want to walk in here and stand by a table and then get in trouble, so. All right, well, I, donuts might, donuts might help.
The voters might be kind of funny, but sometimes...
How many tables will be in here tomorrow?
Well, we're gonna start out with two, see what's left. And we're gonna add a third table if we need to, so that's what happens.
All right, thank you.
Good luck, thank you in advance.
Uh, twenty-three, finance, Jessica?
Hi, any more questions?
Okay, yeah, we went through quite a bit tonight.
Yes, everyone's financed out.
Um, I'm gonna call Matt anyway. I, I know it's not blued out, but probably after, uh, Wednesday, right? Will you report?
I, uh, I did send the report, but I sent it to Lee.
Yep, oh, okay.
So what should have been...
I got it from Matt this morning.
Oh, yeah, I did see that, you're right, yep, I did see it, yep, okay. Anything, anything for chief, Matt Savage?
Um, just, uh, just a request, could you send me a copy of the budget? I saw that we're doing a hundred fourteen thousand dollar increase. I just, I'd just like to see a copy of it.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Uh, park and rec, Sean?
I did have a, a report in the packet and, um, I'm like, we're running out of weather changing so quickly on us, uh, kind of early to be having twenty degrees. So, uh, we're just really, our main winterizing left is the pool, the pool building and water rushing facility.
Okay.
So I just make sure we get stuff...
Flood the ski rooms.
Well, I sure hope we get a, a good, um, I don't know what you call it anymore, but a, a nice week of weather, Native American or whatever you want to call it.
Indian summer.
I know, but I don't know if I could say Indian summer.
Oh.
Sorry. I don't know, I, who knows?
Who knows?
Better move on before you hurt yourself.
Yeah, I know, I know, I, I think the mask helps, but I think the camera's on me, so. Uh, park and rec, uh, planning development, Jen?
Um, I have a report in your packet. Valerie also put in, uh, using the secondary program today. Finance disposal is going to be changing plans here in the next couple of weeks to waste management, so I'm sure we'll bring contracts and things back to you once we find out what we need to do.
Oh, we got a contract coming back? Yeah, 'cause a, a change, a change in name is a contract.
We didn't talk about it.
Yeah, that, that's...
That's a topic for discussion when we have our first meeting with the new general manager.
I thought about it last year when they had the sale in there, so, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'll see that refund in there.
Yeah, that'll be a good opportunity.
They did contact me a couple of months ago on engineering fund, looking at doing some upgrades to the site on Color Street. So I hadn't gotten any more details on that, but they were kind of doing a detailed chance, so there might be some upgrades there too.
Well, that means they'll stay because some of the talk has been that they were gonna close one facility.
Yeah, no, this was...
Cherry Creek or this one, it is gonna stay, okay, good.
They're actually selling the Nolton.
Are Nolton it is, okay.
I think it's Nolton, it's becoming something.
Okay. Anything more for Jen, planning? All right, thank you, Jen. Twenty-seven, uh, chief, Clay Schultz.
I have a very stimulating discussion about cats later, so I'll save my time for that, so.
Seriously, later?
Yeah.
Where is it later?
Under new business, forty-four.
Okay. Oh, my gosh, I thought that was an abbreviation for something else. I thought you were getting, looking for some new equipment or something. All right, so police stimulating, look forward to that for forty-four. Uh, twenty-eight, public works, Michael? Any more?
Uh, no, I was just hoping that the weather can warm up a little more. There's probably a mile or so that's really deep in this wall. And, uh, I'd like to get that done.
Mm-hmm, okay. I don't think so either, yeah. Like a fool, I went out and bought a leaf apparatus for my tractor and now forget it. Uh, technology none, okay. Number thirty, work product transmittal, September building permits. Looking for approval?
Move to acknowledge.
Move to acknowledge by White, seconded by Feeny on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Consent agenda. Uh, request to pull items out of consent agenda or as you please?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thirty-two through thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh...
Second.
Second by White, uh, on the discussion.
I didn't get any of the check system.
Hmm? I signed ENPD this weekend.
But I didn't see the village...
Yeah, I didn't see your big clump there, yeah. Okay.
I will follow up with that.
Okay.
We can remove those if you prefer.
Mm-hmm, I, um, I, I do want to make a comment on thirty-five. I wholeheartedly support, um, that assistance, uh, in reimbursement for, uh, Planner Wheaton.
Absolutely.
Yep, so there was a, a motion by Feeny, seconded by White. Any more in discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so, thank you, ye, so carried. Uh, action ordinances, okay. Resolution, number thirty-seven, resolution number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-five, providing for the sale of approximately four million, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars Waterworks System Revenue Bonds Series two-zero-two-zero A.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny, seconded by Ermeling. On the discussion?
Question?
Yep.
Actually, those bond, uh, the bonds are gonna be paid by the water utility revenues?
Yes, and Greg Johnson is also in line if we have any questions for him.
Okay.
Um, the resolutions were drawn up by Quarles and Brady. They are based on, I think, last budget meeting that we had with finance, the joint meeting. We did show you the preliminary plans for these borrowings. Um, so that's what these resolutions are based off of. But yes, the water revenue bonds are solely backed by water user fees.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Thirty-eight, resolution number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-six, authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed three million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for street improvement projects.
So I have a button here, so this is one big issue. This is the five point four million dollar bond issue. I say, I was talking before at our budget meeting, the, because they're bonds, they have certain restrictions. For this three point one million needs to be spent on streets. So that's why they're individual resolutions.
Okay. Motion by Feeny?
Second.
Second by Ziegler. On the discussion, thank you, Jess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thank you, ye. Number thirty-nine, resolution number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-seven, authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sanitary sewer projects.
Move to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-one-seven.
Move to approve by White?
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. He's doing that on purpose by not saying aye when I, when I stall. Number forty, resolution number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-eight, authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars for storm sewer projects.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny?
Second.
Second by Manel. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried. Forty-one, resolution number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-one-nine, providing for the sale of not to exceed five million, four hundred and five thousand dollars general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series two-zero-two-zero B.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling, seconded by Feeny. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Forty-two, resolution number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-two-zero, providing for the sale of approximately two million, two hundred and one thousand dollars, two million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars of general obligation promissory note, series two-zero-two-zero C.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Feeny?
Second.
Second by Ziegler. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, so carried. Yeah, we got it right on the last one. New business, John Dable, Dable Environmental and Engineering on behalf of property owner Nicolai Lumber Company is requesting an appeal of the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty Plan Commission decision to deny the request to amend their existing conditional use permit for East Gate Apartments approved on June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen for a multifamily residence, nine-plus unit building, land use within the B-one neighborhood business zoning district for a partial address at sixty-nine oh five, seven thousand and seven, seventy-one oh three, seventy-two oh five Schofield Avenue, per section ninety-four point one-six point zero-six parent seven. Resolution number two-zero-two-zero dash zero-two-one, Resolution number two zero two zero dash zero two one. Approve or deny the conditional use permit amendment by Nicolai Lumber Company for the East Gate Apartments.
So I can start off?
Yeah.
To explain?
Yes, please, 'cause I got it.
Um, it's, so when staff was doing the final completion on the project, it was noted that they did not build to what was approved. This, the actual site plan, everything was part of the conditional use permit back in twenty eighteen. So that site plan was tied to them being able to build there. Um, the property at the time was B two, which only allowed for the apartments to be built via the conditional use permit, so they had to go through that process. Um, I know some of you were in the room for that, the plan commission, um, the room was full by some of the neighbors. So, um, when they went through, things were supposed to be a higher aesthetic. Um, when Roman did the final completion, it was found that the site wasn't built the way it was. So, we notified that to them early this year. Um, they chose this summer to request an amendment to the conditional use permit. So the plan commission heard that amendment via a public hearing in September. And they denied the amendment. So as part of the, the zoning requirements for a conditional use permit, regardless, or an amendment, um, the plan commission has the ultimate say, doesn't come to the board, the board instead becomes the, like the zoning board appeals, so you handle the appeal. So, um, John Dable, who was working for Nicolai Lumber Company, put the appeal in and staff was going to meet to talk with them. Um, that meeting never happened. Um, I had sent an email with a date and I had never heard a response. Um, things happened. This morning, he asked about it, so I'm not sure if he's on the line or not, I can't tell, 'cause I'm not on here anymore. Um.
No, okay. Thank you, Michael.
So, at the hearing, it came out that they actually did put more brick on the building. So, it's pretty close to what it was. But the plan commission at that time, it was more on the premise of, you didn't do what you said you were gonna do. You know, that's something that staff struggles with a lot. And we're, that was one of the reasons why the property inspector, um, position was created, was so that we could have better follow-up. Um, because what we were finding is, plan commission or staff would approve site plans, they would not get built as approved. Um, Roman and, um, Emily went out and did a full site on it, because we also had some complaints about the garbage fault was being built. And when the lady called, I said, well, it's still under construction. You know, they were supposed to do a full, um, it was actually supposed to be a full, like, concrete brick type thing. Um, it is just wood right now. So there's, there's other things besides the building elevations, but when we were talking to them originally, it was that the building elevations did not. So, um, at the hearing, they stated that they hired, was it Mark, they hired a new architect?
Mm-hmm. In, in the middle of the process, they hired a new architect?
So it was after we were all done, and after they actually put in the building permit, they decided to change the materials, so.
He admitted at the hearing that they made a mistake. Uh, John Dable was here personally and they admitted that they did not build what they said they would build. And they kinda put it, uh, not real negatively or aggressively, but they put it on the architect's fault that he just didn't follow through. Um, I, I thought actually the meeting was really good.
Right.
And, um, a- all we're asking is that they build what they said and agreed to build. It, it isn't really a whole lot that we're asking for them to change. Um, two of our committee members voted, uh, that they would've let it go. But the, the rest of the, uh, majority said, just build what you said you'd build. Now, granted that the brick is a little bit more, all they'd have to do.
But there was also, there's, if I remember right, there's also, in the eaves, there was some issues?
Yes.
There was also in the calculations on whether some of the sidewalls were included or not included, or bathwalls included?
And they had gone from like a hundred percent on the wall, to like in the real close to sixty.
And the siding, um, it's a vinyl siding right now, and I, I believe what was supposed to be scripted was the LP siding. You know, that upgraded LP siding that it's.
It had a more decorative, the shake.
Much more decorative look, yeah.
Dutch lab, it's called.
Yes, Dutch lab, that's exactly it.
Or, uh, shake.
Yeah, and shakers. It was actually supposed to be a combination
Right.
with some color tones changed to make it look, uh, more. And, I mean, they're getting some pretty heavy reps out there, so. I, I actually thought it was a good meeting. I, I thought he left very good, and I'm, I'm a little surprised with this, to be honest.
So what happens if, if it's denied tonight, then, what, what's the?
Their recourse would be through circuit court to appeal further, or they have to fix it, basically, those one things that they were going to.
But they don't actually have to, uh, in my thought, I thought that they'd have to maybe pull all the siding off. That's not what, I mean, we, we actually didn't even tell them from, you know, you're on the board, on the planning, what to do. We actually just said, work it out with staff. And, and staff will work it out with you, so.
So it's unlikely that they're gonna work it out with you, is my, my question?
He, he said today that he thought we were gonna have a meeting, but the thing is, he never followed up after.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you know, we can work with them as staff, but I, I'm just not exactly sure, I, I don't know if you want to hold off a month and bring it back, give us the time.
I would reach out to him.
Yeah.
I would reach out to him every single week.
Yep.
And just say, we're right here, we're, we're, we're ready to sit down and talk to you. And I, I think that's what we should do on the service side of what we do. And just say, hey, we're, it's not gonna be that hard, we just gotta, you know, twist a few things.
I think, but, no, we need to, we need to help judge for a little bit here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And say, if, if you're making the effort to, to contact him, and he doesn't do anything before our next meeting, then it, it's likely that it's gonna get denied, but then would we force him to, to do the repairs and?
Yeah, with anything, so with anything that gets done here and approved, you're basically telling the village that you're gonna approve it that way. So it just depends on how far, we take the, we try to work with people. So in the past, we've notified people via a letter saying this, this, or this, or usually Roman or I'll sit down with them. Uh, but we have to map it out in a letter, because if it goes to court, you have to have that, it can't be just me telling them.
Right.
So I know that was a little bit of an issue a lot of times, we have to document, that's just the way of the world with us. Um, so, I've never actually had to take it fully, I've had where, um, in the past, when we worked with Dick Flaver and Shane Vanderwall, they would have to provide a letter to, to them, like, they would, they would do the, if it comes to the point where I can't work with them, or they're not answering me, then the lawyer sends a letter saying, you know, your next step is gonna be in court. And I almost got to that point with, um, a drywall company that I had bought and kind of just did a whole remodel job and the parking lot and everything, and their landscaping and drainage and everything was messed up on that, so. But, it kind of, once the lawyer gets involved, we usually don't have to get all the way to the step of going to circuit court. In my seventeen years here, I haven't had to for a site plan issue. But we do have the capability to do that, just because they are saying, um, that they're gonna build it that way.
Right. They agree.
When they give it to you to approve,
Yep.
they're saying, this is what I'm building.
Have they done the curb yet? I did look, replaced the curb there where the driveway was?
Roman, are you, I, I haven't been over there.
I, I, I was, like I said, I, every once in a while, I'll see like somebody, a repair truck or something will drive up and park.
There was issues in the beginning, like, with getting them to replace some of the curving and like the sidewalk again?
Yeah, because we're, it used to be the driveways there. You know, where it used.
I am on, so.
Yeah, Roman's on, so he can answer questions on his side.
Okay, and they never, they were supposed to put in a regular curb. I, I think I've got the right apartment, right?
It's the one over here.
There was, there was quite a few issues with, um, you know, the entrances, the sidewalks, and then
they undermined, um, too far into the right of way along the south side of Schofield Avenue, which took an extensive amount of time for them to repair. So, it's, the whole process has been very, um, non-smooth in, um, working with this company, unfortunately.
And, and we, we have worked with them in the past, right, Ken?
Um, I have.
They've built up here before, I thought you said?
No, not Nicolai number.
You know, they, they agreed to do this, that, that was the whole deal.
Because where they had the, there was driveways
Yep.
that were going in there, and they abandoned those and put them, and they never put in the right curb.
Okay. So what's your?
Yeah, correct, Mark, the curb cuts, the existing curb cuts, the two on the south side of Schofield Avenue, um, they have not, um, replaced those, reject curb like we have made other businesses on Schofield Avenue do.
Right.
Okay.
You know, and like I said, I have seen, like, utility trucks or whatever that have used that and just parked then up on the sidewalk to get off the road, I suppose, but that is not what it's.
Uh, I'll move to deny.
Okay, uh, motion to deny by Feeny?
I'll second.
And second by Ermeling, on the discussion?
Now, are we gonna, are we gonna direct Jen to still?
Uh, with tracking, like you said. You know, by paper correspondence, you know, so. I, I would just, you know, keep a note of it, but I would try to reach them every week, but I think you're right, by email or by letter, yeah.
I think you're gonna need to also, probably as, as far as that goes also, maybe, I'm not an attorney person, but I think Matt needs to be.
To get Matt involved, yeah, I agree.
There's a reason we pay my retainer, and I think that he, he should at least.
So if you did, if you deny their amendment, that means they have to build it completely as it is, so that doesn't give me a lot of.
It doesn't give you any negotiation.
Any negotiation.
That's right.
Don't deny that.
Deny?
Oh, den- yeah, no, no, deny, that's right.
Yeah.
I, I'm looking at the recommended language, so I move to deny.
I, I think both of them in, you have to either deny it, so what you can do is you can deny it, you can approve it, or you can approve it with conditions. I did not give you an approval with conditions, 'cause that would just be.
Yeah, I don't see that, yeah.
That would just be, you would add those, I'd have to add those conditions that you want to put in. But that's kind of always your three options with the conditional.
But we left him that night very clearly that he can work that out on, on what the, what the material should change should be.
How did, how would you like the amendment to be if we're gonna deny it, but, uh, with staff?
Flexibility.
Flexibility to.
I only see one Jen, I only see the one recommended, do you, am I missing?
There's two, I, I did, they're the same number, so the first one is to deny, and then on page one twenty-six is the one to approve.
Okay.
Um, and then you can approve with conditions, but that would be just adding conditions in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Okay.
I don't wanna prove it, but these are.
Mm-hmm. I, I think what you said, uh, to deny with flexibility from village staff.
Yeah, to work with it.
Yep.
And then they can come back and we can approve it if.
Yep.
Well, they can only, so the other thing you need to know is if you deny it, they can't come back for a year.
Oh, good. They should, they should fix it, yeah.
So.
What they, what they said they would do.
Ask for an amendment.
Yeah.
To for a year.
No, they've got to fix it.
Is it one calendar year, or is it one?
It would be one calendar year from when they asked in September.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Feeny, second by Ermeling. Um, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carried. Alright, number forty-five, handbook for elected and appointed officials. Uh, on purpose. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, let's talk about some cats. Forty-four, good note. Number forty-four, E M P D cat contract.
So this will only take an hour.
Meow.
In the spirit of finance, I just wanted to bring to this committee, uh, what, to make you aware of what we're spending on cats, as it relates to, um, to humane society. Um, we do not have a contract for dogs, um, there is no upcharge for that. The contract that we kind of piggybacked off through Wassa PD is called a non-dog stray. Um, essentially, what we try to do is guesstimate how many non-dog strays we will have each year between us and Wassa. And we also share our humane officer together, so that's why we're working together. Um, we essentially kind of buy down the price by guessing we'll have about three hundred. Um, and those first three hundred non-dog strays, which are mostly cats, are a hundred and eighty-five dollars apiece. Um, over the three hundred, we pay two hundred dollars apiece, which really isn't that much savings. Um, for instance, um, it started in twenty sixteen, I went back to that, we, Everest Metro paid ten thousand dollars for, um, non-dog strays, mostly cats.
What year?
Two thousand sixteen.
Thank you.
In twenty seventeen, it was thirteen thousand seven ninety-five. In twenty eighteen, it was nineteen thousand eight ninety. And just to give you an example, the villages portion of that was sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty. Um, in twenty nineteen, it was fifteen thousand six sixty, and the villages portion was twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, just to give you some perspective, Wassa is paying over fifty thousand dollars a year, um, to take cats. Um, the one year it was high in twenty eighteen is because somebody caught, um, a bunch of rabbits at two hundred dollars apiece, so.
So, this is somebody, just so I get this clear, and I know we've talked about this in the past. I mean, I, I've got, uh, deer, foxes, all kinds of stuff in our backyard on the river there, but. So if I have to catch the cat and then I call you?
Yes.
And you're, we are obligated to go and get that cat that, uh, Sid, uh, Weston's resident has caught?
We have in the past.
And, and we, we caught him be, they caught him because it's a nuisance or it's a stray, or?
The problem lies in this, you have, um, an example in one of our trailer parks, somebody's trapping cats, um, and they get seven or eight in two days.
Mm-hmm.
Do the math.
Is that person getting paid at all?
Um, we're paying the humane, excuse, humane officer.
But, but not the trapper? So the trapper's only interest is to get the stray cats out of their area.
And the reason why they're attributed back to municipalities is because there's, there's a cost associated with them, so they can't just drop them off. They have to come through a municipality, because what's happening is an outside jurisdiction can come to the Humane Society and go, put this on Wassa's tab or Weston's tab. So, our department really has to be notified, either an officer drops it off, or a humane officer drops it off. So there's verification where this cat came from, 'cause they're so expensive.
So, uh, somebody trapped two cats, they call E M P D or they call what, nine one?
Call dispatch, and if our humane officer's working, um, there's just one, she'll come and get them and take them up there.
In a cage or something?
Yep, and if she's not, an officer, the day we had seven in those two days, she was off, so we ran out there seven times in two days.
Um, but, I, I'm just, whether this is the right correlation or not, so, we've had mask mandates.
Yes.
And no jur- no, um, uh, you know, safety anywhere in this area has gone if somebody called on a mask, you know, to go and talk to them. We, we made it clear around here that that's not gonna be.
That's correct.
Uh, okay, so.
We're gonna respond to the complaint, my direction is we're gonna respond.
Do we have to? Do we have, are we obligated?
I think so, my direction is respond to the complaint, let them know we received the complaint. Um, there are certain portions of it that's unenforceable, including this last order according to our D A. If they don't like the response, the, the officer's directed to call the health department and have them take.
Okay, now let's go back to the cats.
Sure.
So, um, we're not coming to get them anymore?
That's one of the options.
Okay. But then are we prepared to get the phone calls?
That's exactly it. So, um, I did have, I had started these discussions with Wassa, um, their chief and deputy chief last year. Um, kind of stalled, brought it up again this year, um, their chief actually brought it to their committee. Um, I think the big part of the problem is just my personal opinion, is the Humane Society of Marathon County is charging too much. It kind of has us stuck, and I think it's ridiculous, um.
Well, they're, they're charging probably what they have to actually pay, but yet now, I mean, what about our personnel, what about our labor going to get them, you know, going to get them, and occurring the cost and all that?
So Wassa said, nope, um, well, I won't do it, you pay it. So they, they're gonna continue to do it. We're not obligated by state statute to pick up cats, um, but we have a loose affiliation through three separate contracts that we kind of piggyback on with Wa- with Wassa PD. Um, and it would be a really quick language fix, um, if we, we decide to do that. The drawbacks are, yes, um, who's gonna take care of the cats? Who's gonna get the calls? Um, that is an option, we would still take care of, um, cat bites. So if somebody was bit by a cat, we would still handle that, because that's a health problem. And we would still investigate, um, cat abuse issues and criminal complaints, where we might have to take them in, into, um, um, a quarantine or help for cause, is what it's called. So I just want everybody to make aware that that's how much we're spending on, on cats each year. Um, I did not bring this in front of the city council yet, it's, could be an individual municipality decision or no decision, um.
Is that divided between the three municipalities?
Yep, it's, uh, billed out between, it's categorized between the city, us, and the town.
Categorized?
Yeah.
Oh, sneaky.
That was pretty good.
Wow. No, he said it.
Yep. Yeah.
Quick on the uptake.
Wow, it's not even nine o'clock yet, wow.
And then it's, it's paid for through, you know, financial division of Everest Metro, but it, it's weird how the funding formula works, it actually works out really, really close to what percentage you guys pay us anyways.
Lauren is volunteering to go catch them off.
Hmm.
Just like. No question, so they keep these cats at the Humane Society, and then they sell them. Do we get reimbursement?
No.
Or euthanize them?
Or euthanize.
No, they would never do that.
So there's been a bunch of programs that we've tried, we've tried this neuter and release, um, there's been all these different, none of it works. Um, the bottom line is, we're spending this much on cats, and I think it's a lot of money.
Just, just for sake of curiosity, that.
Watch it. Curiosity killed the cat.
Thank you, I was hoping you'd get that, uh, that fifteen thousand six sixty from last year?
Yep.
What other line items in E M P D budget would be similar to that?
Insurance?[1708.42] I mean, there's really computer maintenance, just like eighty thousand. Um.
Firearms training.
Firearms training's twelve. Um, training budget's fifteen, that'd be one. So our entire training budget is the same.
Jesus Christ.
That's a lot of money.
So this person catching these cats could drive them to the Humane Society themselves?
No.
Would they then incur a cost?
They, they won't accept them.
Oh, they won't?
No.
But nobody's paying them to do.
I, I see that.
They won't be the money.
So we send ambulances out and we only get fifty percent back, right, Matt?
No.
Fifty percent we get paid for ambulances. I think, I think this cat thing is silly. I'm, I'm sorry.
We're not taking care of them.
We'd have to give a, do you, is there like a, a certain ten or fifteen people that are always catching them?
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Or is it just everywhere?
Nah, it's, it's, you, you can get, I mean, think about, we have sometimes we have vacant trailers and cats congregate in there, or somebody dies and we go in there, there's thirty cats.
Yeah.
Um, we do something with them. We take them to Humane Society.
Yeah.
And that's thirty cats, times two hundred bucks apiece. That's happened.
Yeah.
I think it's expensive.
I think we just gotta, there's gotta be a little bit more sharing there with the Humane Society or something. But I mean, you're gonna have to let these people that are catching them have a notice if we decide to do something.
Well, we have, I've told my staff, I don't, you know, I have to be careful, but, um, we don't like people potentially trying to catch and control a cat population in a whole section of the village by setting out. I mean, what's the limitations? They set up twenty, thirty traps and they catch forty, fifty cats. Um, that's a burden on us and the taxpayers.
There's really people doing that?
Well.
But they're not catching raccoons?
But, I mean, I, I caught a half dozen raccoons this year and I just took them up to Ringel and let them go.
Yeah, I live in Ringel. That was your yard. Yeah, that's your yard. Yeah, yeah.
No, but, and, and what's their motivation or what's their?
I think they are either a nuisance and they want them out of their yard, or they are an animal lover and they wanna see them taken care of for it because they're kind of a no-kill facility, they don't say that, but that's generally their philosophy down there. Um, you know, other options we discussed with, with, um, the chief and deputy chief at Wassa PD is euthanization. We, we can euthanize cats at thirty dollars apiece. We run into all sorts of issues that I don't even wanna get into.
No, you don't wanna, you don't wanna go there.
No, you don't wanna be in the business of that at all.
No, you don't wanna go there.
Um, we have done that in cases where the cat's extremely sick and our humane officer has the ability to do that.
Right.
Um, as opposed to taking it to a vet for two hundred dollars if we pay for it. Uh, one or two a year, maybe, um, but the option is just leave it, we pay the money and forget about it. The other option is we don't do cats or we cap it. Um, there are issues that are gonna come up about, you're gonna be getting complaints about, we have cats, what are you gonna do about it? Who's gonna take care of these? Um, some of my responses to that, there's a lot of people out there that care about them. Um, there's a lot of nonprofits, there could be money raised and somebody could take charge of this. Somebody took charge of this neuter spade release program that I didn't know a whole lot about, that didn't seem very successful.
Is that still going in Wassa?
I, I don't know. Um, they were clipping years and then we're still catching them and you're supposed to let them go and it's confusing.
I, I remember several years ago when I started seeing more deer carcasses everywhere. Is that still happening? Nobody's picking them up?
I don't know.
Or do they go back to, Michael, do you know anything there about a, a deer hit?
County highway picking them up?
Are people picking up deer hits or?
If deer are hit in the village, we still pick them up?
Well, I, I just think for looks we do, yeah, 'cause one was hit over by Kelly and, uh.
There's one across from the store.
Yeah.
Right now?
On Jay or what's that?
No, on, uh, can't fill it, so.
Yeah, but.
County used to have somebody that paid for it.
The rendering.
Right.
They don't do, I don't think the rendering workplace does that anymore.
I don't, I don't think so either. I mean, I, I see them on the highway un, until they're born, you know.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So I, it was just an FYI, we're spending a lot of money on cats. That money could be used for a lot of other more valuable things, in my opinion. It does come with problems that, you know, could get annoying as well.
So has the city of Wassa stopped picking them up?
No, they brought it to the board and said, hey, the same thing I said, you're spending fifty-five thousand dollars on cats each year. And their board said, well, I'll take, pick them up.
No, you meant Wassa.
Wassa.
Yeah, I meant Wassa, yeah.
Yeah, he meant Wassa, yeah.
They said, pick them up, we're gonna pay it for it.
And, and when are you meeting with Schofield again?
Um, next month. I did get it on, on the agenda. Their, their portion's a lot smaller.
Well, it's probably two or three grand, but still, it's two or three grand.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it is.
It's still two or three.
It still comes out of, you know, a portion of the budget that's approved. Cause I, I have to budget thirty-five to forty thousand dollars for animals. Half of that, about sixteen thousand five hundred is for half of the humane officer contract, which saved us a tremendous amount of time. Which is a phenomenal job, I think it's a great program. The other half of that is this, cats.
All right.
I'm not really impressed.
Yeah.
I don't know what the, the answer is, but it's, it seems like an awful waste of money to.
I love cats as much as the next guy, but this is nuts.
We thought maybe that if, if, if we could get the communities together, um, start with Wassa and the village, um, maybe sit down and have s, put some pressure on the Humane Society of Marathon County, um, reach out to some nonprofit groups and get the ball rolling. Um, we could probably make some changes, but, um, like I said, Wassa just said no.
Well, I, I, it almost sounds like a profit center for the Humane Society. It, it's, it's not a break even thing. At two hundred hours a cat, that's a profit center, so.
What about this place that's a no-kill, it's a little far?
Well, that's out by Marathon, you know, out on twenty-nine.
Yeah.
That's farther out, um, you know, up north sort of, Marathon City.
I mean, could that, someplace you could tell these people would take them.
Then they gotta pay for them and a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a different ballgame when you have a trap and you gotta start paying for them, that's kind of my point.
Okay.
If you had to pay two hundred dollars a cat, I don't think you'd be trapping them.
They'd quit trapping, yeah.
Or stop them from trapping them.
Well, they might find a different alternative, uh, way, but yeah, okay.
Anyways.
All right, well, thank you. That was enlightening. Um, you, you, were you looking for action or just a, a heads up?
Just.
A heads up?
Wanted to make a different decision.
Well, I think we should bring this back up again, 'cause I would, I would vote right now to, to stop.
Yeah.
So.
I, I'm just letting you know that, so.
So do I.
Okay. I mean, unless we wanna think about it a little bit more and, and think of the ramifications and, but I, I think you have. We've had discussions on this. I, I'd have no.
I think that the, the response from the police department is we're not handling cats. If you wanna take a cat to the Humane Society.
There's a lot of stuff going on right now and I think cats isn't one of them, so.
I agree.
So if there's a, if someone wants to, uh, float a motion out there, that we are gonna, uh, uh, not pick up cats anymore. I think you're gonna have to let some people know, or we're gonna have to put a notice out, but, uh.
There'd be a little bit contractual changes with the strays, 'cause they're trying to estimate how many strays we're gonna get next year and buy down that number for, from, you know, it's, it's insane.
I don't suppose you and Chief Savage want to adopt a couple dozen and make them mascots?
No, thank you.
Yeah, no, I don't think so. All right.
We've had officers get bit by them, I mean, the, you know, scratch, we've had rabies.
Sure.
I mean, it, you know, it, it goes on.
Not fun. Rabies shots are not fun.
Um, anybody care to make a motion, what's your pleasure?
I move that, uh, Everest Metro no longer picks up, uh, stray cats within the village of Weston limits.
Oh, okay.
For next year.
For next year.
For next year? And then you'd have to get Schofield and, uh.
I don't have to.
Oh.
It's broken out that way where, um, if the city of Schofield decided to continue to do this.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and there, there are a lot less, there are a couple thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, we would still do it.
Right, okay, all right.
But it'd still be a savings of.
Yeah.
Twelve, fifteen grand a year.
Okay, motion by Feeny. Do I hear you a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second by Minell. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, so carried. Uh, forty-five, handbook for elected and appointed officials. We've tabled it, the last one, we brought it back up. I think we're, we're either talking about the, the thirty-some pages or the, uh, ninth and tenth, um.
Chapter.
Uh, chapters.
That's what trustee Feeny mentioned was nine and ten were, and there was an.
Nine, ten, and appendix A. That's just, uh, covering motions essentially.
And how to conduct the meeting.
Right.
I guess I would like to make motion to accept nine, ten, and appendix.
Okay. Motion by Ermeling?
Second.
Second by Feeny. Um, on the question, I, uh, out of no ill or negative or any disrespect at all, uh, to the author, um, I, I'm just gonna forewarn that I will be voting no, because I think there's a lot of stuff out there, but I am fine if this gets adopted, totally.
Well, the only reason I.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with it. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
My, my reason to want to do this is that there have been times when I've had a question about something and it's just a really easy, fast look. I've looked through the statutes, um, trying to find some things and let me tell you, it was very confusing because one part of the statute would tell you something and you'd go to another one and you would read it and it would kind of refer, and sometimes you had to go through three of them before you could actually say, okay, this one, this one. And all this really does nine and ten with it is just give you a guideline to kind of give a quick look see.